All right, so I'll call the meeting to order. Welcome, folks. This is the regular meeting of the Rutland Town Select Board for November 21st, 2023. We have a full complement tonight. Kurt Hathaway, Joe Donardo, Mary Ashcroft, Matt Geddy, and Sharon Russell are all here, so please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the product of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we've got in our packet the Select Board minutes for November 7th. Assuming you folks had a chance to look them over.
Move to approve.
Motion's been made to
Second.
And seconded to approve the minutes and the additions, deletions, corrections. If not, all those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? Okay, I'm gonna circulate a signature. Are there any board member announcements? Nope. That was easy. End of meeting. Okay, there we go.
See you.
Update from Select Board Chair. I'll be very brief. I did attend the Rutland Ad hoc Housing Working Group meeting. This is the group that Lyle Jepson mentioned when we were here the last, when he was in here, last meeting. They are working on a legislative ask. Basically, the mayor has set a goal of 1,000 housing units by, and I can't remember the year, I think it's within the next five years.
Soon.
Soon, yeah. And it was a very good discussion. I will keep you updated. Basically, it was discussion centered around easing some of the regulations and easing some of the conditions on funding and of course, more funding for affordable and other types of housing. Okay, covers that. With the Planning Commission, I attended a site visit of where the solar array is proposed for Route 7 north, and this is above or north of the Max Steel property. Very interesting meeting. It, that's, I don't know who's farming that, but boy, that's a chopped up, very, very hilly.
Brad Thomas.
Okay, yeah. Tough piece of property to farm, I would think.
It is not the prime ag land that it would refer to us. We farmed it for quite a while before Brad had it.
All right.
Good deer.
Leaves a lot to be desired.
Don't forget, on Monday after Thanksgiving, we will be meeting at Dyer Road at 9:00 in the morning to do the site visit required before we, inelegantly put, throw up the town road. So be there, it will be a good time. And last thing. Oh, okay, I think that's it. All right. So if it's okay with folks, I would like to take out of order item, under action item number, letter A. We have Valerie Taylor, Chair of the Mendon Select Board with us this evening. And would you like to come and speak to us about your proposal? Yeah, if you could sit there, then people on the screen can see you too. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
As Mary said, my name's Valerie Taylor from the Mendon Select Board. I have Larry Curcell, former member of our Select Board, and also a member of the Steering Committee affiliated with the Route 4 scoping study. I believe you all have the letter that we sent to V-Trans in front of you. Well, that's the same. It's the same letter we sent you on, so you have copy of our speed reduction request and some focus points attached to that. Just briefly walking through our letter. I believe the biggest takeaway is that in order for Mendon to accomplish any of our goals in the second paragraph, speed reduction is a high priority. We started with the Vermont Council Rural Development Community Visit that led to Mendon on the Move, where 200-plus residents came together and spoke about their, the highest priorities that we had, which led to outdoor recreation and envisioning our, the Village of Mendon, like enhancing, enhancing our village district. We
Where is your village district?
It starts at the Mendon Orchard.
Okay.
Extends to Meadow Lake Drive.
Okay.
Sugar and Spice. So we're trying, we're, we're trying to revolve safety. Safety has come forefront to include or to enhance the pedestrian bike, bicycle lane crossings, access in and out of this village district. We have, and this is where you may want to come in, the, the history of accident-prone intersections in Mendon are Sugar and Spice and Meadow Lake. We have Park Lane, even in front of the Orchard heading down in that area. The speed limit is 45, and we're trying to reduce it to 40 in that area. So that would, that would start at the Townline Road. It just becomes a little bit of a race there near Casellas where the Orchard is. So what we found with VHB Engineering, our latest, the scoping study is still, is still ongoing. VHB is the latest addition to our public safety enhancement hopes. Because Mendon has seven miles of the Route 4 corridor, most of it is, it consists of climbing lanes. And what VHB did find that it's visually inviting for a driver to speed. And we are hoping to work with yourselves, Killington, because we have bought Killington, our speed on, on the upper segments of Route 4, we are hoping to come down to 45 from 50. And we also understand that with a reduction of speed, usually the configuration of the road has to change. This is our starting point. The letter, the letter doesn't show any emotions of what we hear from the residents. With the, this past summer, we had four horrible accidents that included fatalities. And people are speaking out. They're scared. We're scared. We have Meadow Lake, Journey's End, heading up the mountain. You've got Cream Hill, Turnpike, the whole, the whole corridor. I believe everybody is white knuckling their steering wheels. We're scared. We're scared to slow down. As a mother, I have two, two girls driving. I like my neighbors a lot. I love them. We, we all are just so concerned for our safety. When we are pulling into these roads, we're sitting in the fast lane. You learn to pump your brakes so that someone, because you're on the uphill incline, if you take your foot off the brake, you're sitting there and they don't even know you're, you're turning. I mean, they see your blinker, pump your brakes. This is what we talk about, how it's safer. It's just scary. It's, it's just, it's now scary. There's a history of accidents. The facts are in front of you. I, I don't, I don't want this to just be a piece of paper. I want to work together. I know it'll be a process, but I, I'm proud to be an advocate for our town. I care about Mendon. I care about Rutland, Killington. We all use the road and we're a community. We don't have to look at it as separate towns. I, I believe in my heart that we just need to come together and figure out a way to make it safer. And if it's not the speed, which I believe it is, then something else needs to change. And we need your help. If you're asking for help.
You've referenced the scoping study, but it looks like it's not completed yet. Okay.
Yeah, I can address that. Again, Larry Curcell, I spent nine years on the Select Board, and I'm a tropical storm Irene survivor. So we started this scoping study when I was on the Select Board, and it was an alternative grant, basically studying safety for pedestrian and bicycle safety and addressing this speed issue in Mendon regarding pedestrian and bicycle safety. A lot of our residents, when they got involved in our public hearings, were just looking at Route 4 scoping study and did not focus on pedestrian and bicycle. And that's where Val is coming in now. And they came to the meeting, two public meetings, basically describing what Val just did, going up Route 4 or coming down. If you have to turn or come out of one of those side roads, as Val said, you're looking in your mirror, pumping your brakes, got your directionals on and praying. I don't live in that section, but when I was on the Select Board, we did a reappraisal and serving on the BCA. Numerous times, I had to go up and look at property. I witnessed that same thing. It was new for me. So going up through, you know, we find there's three sets of drivers. You know, the first set, if it's 50 miles an hour, that's as fast as they're going. Second set, 50 miles per hour is the guideline. They know five or seven miles over, they're safe without getting ticketed. And the third group doesn't really care what the speed limit is at all. So when we started the scoping study, we invited Secretary of Vermont, Agency of Transportation, Joe Flynn, and he came down and met with us. We talked about the village, and he recommended that as Chair of the Select Board, I write a letter to him, which I did. And I emailed it to him, and that's on file with V-Trans. Then we talked about, we were in front of the new Green Mountain Finger Lakes facility, about the speed limit there. And as we were standing there, he was watching the traffic go by, shaking his head, kind of guessing what the speed was. He informed us that, you know, Route 4 has a U.S. designation, which means it is intended and designed to move traffic. And he said, you know, when we get involved in lowering the speed limit, it's a tall order, but it can be done. And then we discussed, it's, it's not always the speed limit, it's the speed that people are driving. And we, we know that from data in the crashes. My, my letter I wrote is dated last December 2022, and there's, you know, as Val just mentioned, more serious accidents that have happened since then. When you come around Sugar and Spice and start up Route 4, you all of a sudden, you have a passing lane in a huge shoulder. In our research, in, you know, serving on the Transportation Council Advisory Council Regional Planning, that was the design. The wider the road, the faster people will travel. They have that safety element. They got a big shoulder in a passing lane. So the scoping study has come out with, you're not going to dig up any asphalt, but you re-stripe the road so that people have that narrow effect. And what happens is they slow down. So that's what, starting at Mendon Mountain Orchard, you know, with re-stripping, if, if V-Trans will go along with that, that slows down traffic. And then going up Route 4, taking out that passing lane and that huge pavement to re-stripe that with the double stripes and the bars, that turns that into a single lane. And it's, it's traffic calming, and we're trying to slow traffic down. I know Bismarck was just successful in getting another side, section changed to 25 miles an hour by Camuto Store going north. And V-Trans came back, I think on more than one occasion, and asked them, what, how are you going to enforce it? And that's, that's one of the big issues when you do a speed reduction or ask for it. They're going to come back and ask. This section where the 50 mile an hour speed limit is, is enforced by Vermont State Police right now. So they would have to answer that question. Most of our patrols are in the village district. So, and I think the revenue now on Route 4, if our sheriff patrol that, the revenue goes to the state, not to the town. So, so now we just patrol in the town. So.
So let me ask Select Board members, questions, comments?
One.
Yeah.
So just to clarify your ask, you're asking the town to lower its speed limit for that whole segment where it's currently 45, to lower it to 40. Is that correct?
Through our village district.
Well, I mean, so it goes, as you're coming up Route 4 from Home Depot, changes to 45 somewhere between there and Post Road. Are you asking us to lower it from there up to the Townline?
You could consider it. That, that was part of the, that was something that VHB noticed. I believe that's where accelerating starts, at Home Depot. So Route 7, we need some climbing lanes, once you head around the corner, when the, the speed changes to 50 from 45. I mean, we have countless 18-wheelers heading up the mountain, and we need, we need those passing lanes. We don't know if we can change the road and limit the amount of passing lanes. But yes, to answer your question, we didn't know if you would consider that. I've noticed that you start at 35 near Home Depot, and there's no 40 in between, I think. I haven't, I haven't noticed that. I believe it jumps to 45. And it does slow. I mean, right after Casellas, we need that, we need that climbing lane right there, because you have the Casella trucks pulling.
And there's currently a bottleneck at Best Western, because all of a sudden, I turned to a turning lane. So people are zooming through the passing lane all of a sudden. Either they blow through it in the turning lane, or they gotta get over.
We also have a lot of comments, like people saying, why don't you just use police force to keep the, keep the numbers of people speeding down? And it just hasn't worked. Tried that for decades. We haven't.
Well, I know of two times when we have joined with other municipalities. We joined with Rutland City and requested Route 7, starting south in Rutland Town, going through the city and hitting Rutland Town north. We requested a five mile an hour reduction. We joined with them to do it. That was, that was, felt really good, you know? We got denied.
Feel that. I want to go to bed.
We, we got denied, just so you know. And then we did do a scoping study a few years ago with West Rutland and the corridor that we have with them, to do much of the same thing you were talking about, the making it bicycle, more bicycle friendly and more calming the traffic. Not, we didn't necessarily pick up on the recommendations that were made. But, so we, we have cooperated with other municipalities, and I guess it's to this group, we can do it one of two ways. We can toss the issue to the Highway Committee, or we can do intermunicipal and take a look at the, you're stuck either way, Joe.
You know, you know that, you know the outcome of us going with the city to V-Trans and trying to get Route 7. And they said that there's no problem, is what they said. They came and, and I don't, and so our second constable, who runs radar a lot, said they must have been there, like at night, because the average speed limit on Route 7 going south into the city is about 50. And coming out of the city, it's probably 45 to 50, but they said there was no problem. So I wouldn't, you know, we can team up with you guys who try to do this. I don't know if we have a real problem between Home Depot and Townline Road. There's not a lot of accidents there. We don't go there too often, do we? Not too. Most of them are down by Home Depot and in that area, right? Yeah. So, I mean, we could go ahead and do this, but I can pretty much tell you V-Trans is just gonna say, no.
No consideration.
But you can, you can do everything you can to try, because we all know that if the speed limit is posted at 45, everybody's driving 55. Or, or better, because they assume that 10 miles is given and they can just do that. So I don't hold a lot of assurance that we could get anywhere, but I don't have a problem with trying. You know, if, if it takes a couple of communities to get together and do that, I mean, you guys have a lot of factual evidence of accidents and, and what's going on there. So, so there's some data there that supports, you know, and if most of those are speed-related, some might be weather-related, but either or, speed usually ends up being the culprit. But I, I just don't hold out any real high hopes that the state will, will listen to. And if, you know, they're, they're gonna, well, you know, do more police, well, Rutland Town and Mendon and Rutland City and every community in the state of Vermont would have to have 24/7 traffic control. People would have to be out there 24/7, because as soon as a car's gone, everybody just resumes, you know, they, they assume speed limits are a suggestion and not the law of the road. So it's, it's very difficult.
And I know our goals with Mendon on the Move and VHB, working, working with us now, revolve around the village district, because we want, we want Mendon to be noticed and not just to drive through town. You know, we have the golf course, we have the Orchard. We're trying to bring more businesses. We're just trying to put us on the map a little bit more than just a highway. But I think the summer was just a rude awakening. And I know, I mean, there have been many groups that have tried to slow, slow Route 4 down. But it, it's hard, like it's hard driving through there and knowing you're driving over these places where lives, it's kind of an eerie feeling. There's too many, there's too many of them. And I just, I really am determined to just make this corridor safer. It has to, it just has to be safer. It has to, something has to change.
Any other Select Board questions or comments? Then I'm gonna make a suggestion, and then you can agree with me or not. No more. My suggestion is, when the scoping study is finished, if you could send it on to us, and then we'll have the data that you're speaking to. And then we'll either have, we'll figure it out, but I'm guessing intermunicipal perhaps, to take a look, probably formulating a position with the full Select Board first, and then going into an intermunicipal discussion with you and see if this is something we would want to go in on. Yeah, I appreciate you bringing this. I, you know, everybody's got stories of that corridor. And Journey's End is where I slowed down, because I nearly hit a deer there once. So, you know, that, in addition to everything else, there's wildlife that crosses there.
Our scoping study is scheduled to be delivered to us next month.
Okay. Good. So we'll look forward to receiving it, and we'll be back in touch. Feel free to nudge us once you, you send us the scoping study.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you for taking us first. I had to regional planning, so Brad Nicholson doesn't give me a hard time.
Thank you. Okay, this is the time for questions or comments, or public, public comments from the floor. Mr. Ron, since you are not otherwise on the agenda, would you like to come and?
Love to.
Okay.
I'm back. But this time, we're excited.
Okay.
Yeah. We're very close with the process. Well, by the way, Carl Ron, and I'm the Chairman of the Road Committee, and
For, for which development?
I'm sorry, Windmere.
Okay.
Yes, Windmere, top of Killington Avenue. And we are so close. We're down to two items. And I need a thought on one. The second one is, we're locating the title search right now, title certificate, I should say, and a lawyer is doing that for us. I guess that's one of the stipulations. And then the second one is, I guess for one year, if I get this correct, Windmere would be responsible for the road if you choose to accept it, as far as a transfer. I guess that's one item?
Well, this, there's been a bit of a gap here.
Okay.
Last time I was up there, I think we were looking at the stormwater retention pond as part of our network. And we, before that, I think we were up with former Road Commissioner Byron Hathaway, talking about what it would take to have the town agree to take over the road. I've heard since that there might have been discussion about not taking over the road, but allowing you to come in or to, if you pay the cost of paving, we would assist you with paving. So I don't know where we are at this point. This is like a five-year history. And unless you've been to talk with our Highway Committee, that's probably where the next discussion should happen, because these folks need to, you know, come up to speed a little bit with what your thinking is. So I know you've got two asks there, but I'm not really familiar, and I don't know as the Highway Committee is either with them.
Okay. I guess, right, this, there's one part of that requirement is that if, should the, you know, we work with each other on this, and you've agreed to have the road transferred over, we would still be responsible, I guess, for damage, major damage to our road for one year, I think, if I read it correctly?
Have to look at that.
Yeah.
I can't remember the wording.
Yeah, and, and
And you needed proof of money that we could afford to.
Well, we also needed to know what was under the road. That was a big concern, and we needed as-built plans, and we needed to know the easement situation, because maintain, to see whether there were maintenance easements on either side, drainage easements where they ran, and what utilities, where they were actually located, so that if, and how the road was built, and whether it was built to town specs at the time. So that's kind of where things fell before. And I know that your, your folks at the time were unsure that they could locate that information. So
Yes, and we have secured that.
All of it?
I, I do.
Good.
I've been a busy boy.
Very good.
Lot of homework. About two years. That's what I mean. We're, I think we're down to just a few documents that, even the Act 250 we have.
Okay.
Which is about 40 pages. Have you ever seen one of those?
Oh, yeah.
Do you want all 40, or would you, is there something?
Usually there's a section that addresses transportation and municipal services, so, but I will let you. So I, I keep looking over here. This is our Highway Committee of the Select Board, Kurt Hathaway and Joe Donardo. Um, so I, I keep looking over here. This is our highway committee of the select board, Kurt Hathaway and Joe D'Nardo. So the next step I would suggest would be to bring in everything that you have, all of those things that I said we were seeking in the past. And then maybe have these folks pull out what is required to take over a town road. Go through what you have and see if there are gaps and investigate the question. Is that agreeable to the highway committee?
So would that be something as simple as me coming by and just dropping off the reams of drawings and schematics and everything or?
Yeah, we'd have a meeting. I don't know when our next meetings do, but.
Okay, so I could just bring that here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, or you could come into the meeting even.
Okay. Yeah, whatever works for you.
There's enough stuff that we're gonna need to see it.
Yes.
Digest it. Dave will be a big part of that and it's gonna generate questions.
Yeah, there's quite a bit. Yeah. But my question to you, back again to that piece, I think you'll eventually ask for, again, we'd have, be responsible for one year. Is we're trying to come up with a monetary amount. Our accountant thought.
Eric, do you know anything? Like when we took over other roads, I don't remember that being unless that's something new. But when we took over Grover Drive, I don't remember them being responsible for a year.
I don't, and you know.
We need to see the, what we've done in the past, but I don't recall that as being, once the town takes over the road, I'm assuming it's ours.
Yeah, normally.
Well, I don't think there's any. But we, we'd have to make sure that.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
Well.
That, that's a.
Don't assume anything. These guys will tell you, go through the regs and tell you what you're gonna need to do.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes. Hi, Dave. Go ahead. Since you're the highway commissioner, perhaps we ought to let you weigh in on this.
I would appreciate that. Thank you. Um, so Carl, this is, this is a, a left-hand turn here from what we've been talking about. It was just us participating in the paving portion of it. Now you actually want us to take over the road? That's new.
Uh, well.
You want, you want this to become, you want this to become a town road? So we change the name and the addresses and the whole thing, correct?
That's, that's correct. And I think that's, that is a process actually this past year. And we did a.
Originally it was just, we were supposed to, we were supposed to pave it under our contract and you guys paid for it. It wasn't anything about taking the road over, but.
Yes, but that's the direction we're heading in now.
Okay.
And in fact, we just had, two weeks ago, we had a meeting with our Board of Directors and also the road committee as well as the executive committee. And it was unanimous. Everybody is for this to continue the process.
You are aware that the services that you receive now from a private contractor, you guys will be assuming all of that on your own. Because if I understand it right, the private contractor plows the road. They do all the driveways, sidewalks, do everything. Is that right? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Winter time maintenance, because if the town takes it over, they're gonna plow the road and you, all the rest of that, you're on your own.
No, we, we understand that. In fact, that's part of it. Cause we have some folks, I'm trying to save them some money and you know, they're charged a hefty amount to just plow the road itself and salt it.
Yeah.
So, so that's why they're excited to.
Okay, because you know, I've been here now going on about eight years and this has been off and on topic for that whole period of time. In the beginning, it sounded like the residents didn't want to give that up. And then there was some concerns about how things would be done differently once the town took over and, and what would be, and then there was a time period there that Dave is referring to where we had kind of got the impression was that, well, maybe we'll just work with the town to get the road paved and we'll just keep it the way it is. But now it sounds like we're back to where we started about four, five, six, seven years ago was the road's done, want the town to take it over and if that's the direction we're going, then we'll, we'll have to pursue that. That'll require a little more investigation. But you said you've got a lot of the documents, which is what the town has, what the highway committee will need is that there's gotta be a list of what we asked for. Um, and I don't believe we've hung on to that, but it's, it's out there and then we'll make sure everything is done. And that's in the ordinance.
Yeah. So once we have all of that, then we can compare what we need to what you have. And then if there's any shortcomings, so that'll, that'll work out. I think the, the way to go from here would be you get copies of what you have to Bill. Um, and then Bill will make them available. I don't know if we need multiple copies, but we'll at least.
We're gonna want multiple copies.
You're not going to.
You know, Dave, you know, but like if we get a copy of everything that we've asked for that you have, we'll check that against our list. Dave can go through it and Kurt and I, and then we can come up with, okay, this is where we need to be and if there's anything missing and then we need to, like I said, make sure that your folks are on board and know what the changes are and how things, um, it will require address changes, right, Bill? Okay, so we are already currently in two areas of town doing address changes. That seems to be like the end of the world. So just prepare folks that it's not the end of the world, but it will be a little bit of a burden. But, but those things are out there because you guys have whatever you have now and it'll be different.
Okay.
Okay.
Bill's been great. He's, he's filled me in on the process and and, uh, working with me this past year. So I think we have a lot of the documents that you folks forward, but I will do that. I'll drop them off. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, you guys too. Enjoy.
Okay, any other public comments or questions from the floor? If not, we'll go right to the agenda. Ed Dumas, town police chief.
Did I give you folks yesterday?
Not yet. Thank you.
Thank you. So last two week period had seventy five calls, uh, seven traffic stops. Those retail tests, most of them are taking place in the southern end of the town. Little different format. I've achieved watering, couldn't get the, uh, other format to work on the computer today, so. Any questions on this?
Select board questions? Doesn't appear so.
We got a quote for the, uh, the radio. I think we told you like either fifty Q or fifty seven hundred. I think it came back at fifty seven hundred. We haven't picked it up yet. We're still waiting for, uh, CDC to get in touch with us on that.
Now that's for the new vehicle that we just
Correct.
Signed on here. Okay.
I think that's all I have.
We will be uh, talking about the Cortina.
I'll stick around.
Agreement. Okay, that would be helpful. Thank you. Um, questions of our police chief, and we did have a police committee meeting, so I think the minutes are here. It was a budget meeting. There's nothing. Let me, do you wanna? Wanna summarize what we went over?
Uh, I don't know. While I look for that, I'll ask you a question. Did that Tahoe that I saw driving through town with no plate on it, was that you? That would be me. There is a plate on it. It's, it's on the tinted black back window that you can. Like the rest of the traffic.
Yeah, but George might be an actual authentic one.
Hey, you didn't bust out a crane for that one?
Uh, no, no, no. You actually printed off a real one.
Okay.
All right. It's my understanding that Kerry paid for it, so I, next week I'll go up there and try to get a red plate for it.
All right, so we had, we had a committee meeting. We spent a fair bit of our time talking about, um, counting for the Cortina funds, which I don't know if that's something we want to bring up now or have another meeting.
South and funds.
South and funds. So our auditor was reviewing that with Kerry. Hopefully we'll have that figured out for vegetarian purposes soon. And we went through the draft budget. There were still a lot of blanks to be filled in, so we will need to meet again to go over those. We briefly discussed some additional asks from the department in that regard for potential future planning as far as personnel and, um, salary structure. Uh, as well as succession planning. And let's see, as well as medical insurance issue, you will see referenced in the minutes. No decisions on those items have been made. About it.
Okay, um, just for, I, I should have mentioned this at the beginning. With the agreement of the board, we should probably have one evening, not a regularly scheduled select board meeting where we only do the budgets. How about that? Brand new idea, right? Okay. So let's plan on that. And that, in that case, I'm sure that some of the suggestions in here, like a step increase for pay. Like the medical coverage issue that Matt touched on will be something, you know, future planning purposes that we do need to take a look at. So.
You're looking at, if you want to stick to a Tuesday, you got one. The twelfth of December.
Yeah.
We got two meetings in a row, one for the regular meeting and then the budget meeting. Unless you wanna find another one in there.
I don't know. Well, no, I think the twelfth will think that gives all of the departments enough time. The most, most of the committees have already met and done this, so we've got the numbers soon. Yep.
The eleventh would work good for me.
The eleventh is a Monday.
Yep.
Okay.
Better. That allows me to at least get down to the fire station and fix some of the broke stuff that they threw those with.
They meet on Tuesday.
What do you think? Are you?
I don't know that I, where I'm gonna be at.
Yeah, okay.
Tendatively good day.
I have surgery the first.
Oh, yeah.
December eleventh doesn't have anything on it yet for me, so.
He's holding up proof that there's nothing in his.
A lot of dots on here. That one is one of the days it doesn't have one.
Look at that.
All right, so Monday, December eleventh. We will do our budget meetings and we'll just take them, take them in some kind of order. We'll see, we'll probably have Bill check in with various department heads to make sure we have a good time. And I think it's usually maybe half an hour per department. If that, yeah. Five thirty? Anybody? Five thirty?
Yeah, it gets dark. Gets darker, we know.
Do you wanna, do you wanna do it any earlier? I know Matt's got a, a workday.
I try. Kind of five.
Five thirty? Yeah.
Cause we have to do the.
We have to do the general too. Yeah. Okay, so let's set that. And then all of you, you folks who have budget-related issues, um, that's the date to target. And most of the departments have already got their requests in anyway. So, okay.
Do you want to get together, one more police committee meeting before, cause we didn't get very far on our budget?
We did go.
There are a lot of question marks.
Yeah, because we were, and, and then Kerry, we were wondering about some of the increases like V M R's and whatever. And then Kerry sent around, I think, an email that um, explained to department heads how much to budget in each category. So that probably would be a good idea.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Between now and December eleventh. What do you think? All right, we'll try. Okay, thank you, Chief. Oh, any other questions for the chief? All right, thanks. John Paul Fagnant, town health officer, public safety building clerk and second constable.
Hi, good evening.
Hi.
By now I think you should have gotten Ed Clark's um, analysis of the items that are being considered for change orders. Um, this week they anticipate finishing up the concrete work. And we're on schedule to have the steel delivered in early December. So the project is moving forward pursuant to the new schedule. That's all I have on that. I assume you folks are gonna discuss what, how you want to approach those issues later.
Um, we, well, it's up to the board. I mean, if.
Well, I think that we need, there are some questions, but I think.
There, there's a couple of things. One is we do have some um, information from our town attorney. I don't know if you want to go into executive session to discuss that or whether it's just keep it in your mind and we can go on to the change order requests. Or do you want, while we have John Paul, do you want to take it up now? What's your pleasure?
Well, I don't know if discussing the change orders in the contract, if we're supposed to do that in executive session or not. I don't know.
I don't know either, but.
Cause my concern is I want to make sure that the change orders are in accordance with what we've agreed to. And there are some costs in there that I'm not sure that we should be liable for. That, that's, I guess, and, and the other thing was, um, it, it says that they were approved. And I don't remember, and I, and again, I, I need Kevin's analysis is that we have given our, um, Ed Clark, the authority to approve change orders and approve payments because um, stuff is, you know, I, I thought we had that option at the end, but, but it seems that that might be different. So I need to have that clarified. Just to make sure that we're doing everything in accordance with the contract.
Right.
Cause there's a, that's a pretty hefty sum of money on that, uh, orders for this week that says they're approved, but if Ed's doing that, or do we get to do that? Um, so I need that clarified.
And, uh, Kevin was not going to be calling in tonight. So do you want to do an executive session a little bit later to touch on his advice? To us?
I, I think that we need to forward these change orders and what they constitute to Kevin.
He's had them.
He has.
He's had them. He's looked them all over. He's been in touch with Ed. Um, he's been, so, yeah.
So the email that we got sometime today would address that?
Yes.
Cause I hadn't had a chance to read it and I don't know what he said. We, we need to know what that's, make sure that everything's on, uh,
Okay.
Because I have some concerns about that. So I guess maybe we did, should discuss that, I think, executive session since it is pertaining to the contract.
We'll hold on that until a little bit later.
Oh, John Paul, check back in for that?
Yeah, um, JP, are you willing to join us in executive session toward the end of the meeting?
Sure, maybe you could just shoot me a text, let me know you're getting close. I can come back on.
Bill can do that. Thank you.
All right. Great, thanks. Talk to you then.
Any other, any other questions of our uh, town health officer, building clerk or second constable?
Oh, good. Thanks JP.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
All right. Barbara Noise Pulling. Hey, Barbara.
Hey, hi, everyone. The Planning Commission, uh, we did look at our budget, um, last week. Um, and discussed it, um, ready to pass on what we'd like it to be. Um, I'm not sure if, if, um, a request went in, um, maybe Bill can answer that from that discussion. It's basically level funding.
Oh. Oh. Okay, if you, um, Bill says yes, so if we look at the general budget sheets, the Planning Commission has. What, two, three, four lines, something like that? And he says yes.
Okay, good, good. Um, the only other thing I have this evening is also last week, we did a site visit. Of the Post Road Solar, uh, proposed development. Um, there, there were Planning Commission members there and Mary was there, um, and we met with the developer. They're now thinking, um, they will have their full application ready. Uh, for the P U C, the state, um, in December. So the timing was good to check in with the developer, um. Uh, seems like we're all on the, the same page. Uh, it will be, uh, good to see his, uh, final site plan. And to see if everything that we've talked about, um, is in there. Um, but, um, you know, we, we had discussed, uh, earlier in previous meetings, like is a setback enough? And there's, um, not much that can be done there. Um, it's, it's really, uh, um. The, the terrain is much more varied than, than I thought it was. This is why site visits are so good, right? Um, so, there, you know, there's a wetland in the middle, there's all kinds of, uh. Big hills to accommodate, and they also found, um, they used an old, um, state. Um, archaeological study, and they're gonna have to stay out of a certain area, uh, of the site as well. So, but I, I, I think it's, I think it's on track. Um, uh, one of the questions for them, for the developer, is the, um. Is the curb cut and the access to that, uh, to that site, that is just one access, it's off Route seven. It's a very narrow curb cut and, um. They probably, uh, V, I have a feeling V Trans will ask them to do a little bit more, especially during the construction phase of this. So, um, that's more information to be coming down the pike, I think, on this.
Yeah, Matt.
Um, Barbara, when you say on the, the setback that not much can be done, what do you mean by that? Does that mean that they don't want to because they need the space to put in more panels or the terrain doesn't allow it or?
Maybe both of those. Um, that they, um, they assure us that the screening will be, uh, robust. There and will be fast growing trees. Um, they're not willing to go, um. There's a hundred, they're, right now on Route seven, there has to be a hundred foot setback and that's what they have and nothing more. And, yeah, because of the archaeological site, because of the wetlands. Um, because some of the really steep terrain in there, um. To get as much, to, to put as many panels as they want, um. They are, that, that's what they're gonna be proposing, just that one hundred foot setback.
They, they did speak to plantings that they were going to be doing, and because of the slope of the area, the. The, um, cars on the road are down lower, so if you put. Um, shrubs and trees up a little higher, that's gonna more effectively block some of the things up on the hill. Um, just because of, you know, the topography. Um, and you're looking at the side of the panels and not the panels full on, because these are, these are stationary panels, they're not moving with the sun. And they're, you know, pointing south, um, and travelers on the road are gonna be.
Because of that.
West of that.
That location coming out of the city with what's there, you're gonna be by those before you even hardly know they're there. Be that, that short section.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe some of the others you might notice. Southbound traffic, you'd be seeing the backside of them probably, but.
Some of them.
They, they won't be anywhere near as noticeable as the ones in Virgens.
That's very true.
And.
And we talked about the ones in Virgens.
You know, though, that was probably the first solar site that I can recall. They, they've been there at least twenty years. And.
Give them credit, they do take care of that one up there.
Well managed and it's.
There's some solar fields around here that are getting no maintenance at all, which is a little irritating.
Well, we did mention too, the Cold River Road, um, the, how the, the vegetation there has grown up, the plantings have grown up. And that actually shields the view pretty well, so.
You know, I mean, if you're in the second story of a house, you're gonna see that. The, the other thing that most of these solar companies have to be mindful of is if you put up. Shrubs that get too high, those panels along that side lose the afternoon sun. Or the, depending on which side the sun's coming, so they're, they're trying to. Um, make everybody happy, but still make it so they work.
Yeah.
You know, if you put twenty, ten foot high trees or twelve foot high, we're okay, but if they're twenty or. High trees and you, you're starting to defeat the purpose, so. But I, but I, I could have told you that that was not flat.
Well, you know me, I have to.
Well, no, no, I understand, but you, you haven't had to try to chop grass out there.
Oh, God.
And, and you talk about the wetland, there's that one field that's over there and depending this summer, you just look at that field.
Yeah.
You don't even, don't even walk out there, it's not coming back. Anyway.
What else you got Barbara?
Um, well, that's about it. The panels, as you say, will be facing directly south. So, the, you know, there, you won't, you really won't see too much driving by. And from as far as we can tell, the only people that will be able to see the array, um, would be those up at the armory. And, um, so I, you know, I, I don't think it has anything to do, I don't think it'll have much impact for the town. Or residents at all.
Okay.
If all goes as advertised.
Yeah. So it was, uh, I will, so I was pleased at the turnout of the Planning Commission folks, I think. All but one Planning Commissioner was there, it was a really good turnout, so I was impressed.
We like getting out.
Yeah, yeah, and we carpooled from sewers, so that was fun too. Alright, any questions of, uh, Barbara Noyes Pulling, Town Planning Commission Chair? Okay, thank you Barbara. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director.
Good evening all, happy Thanksgiving to you.
Thank you.
Sharon, I want to wish you a fast speedy recovery. I wish you well. Um, not a lot to report, basketball starts this coming week after Thanksgiving for rec. I believe we're putting in the rink right after Thanksgiving, so we'll be. Hoping Mother Nature will kick in, that's a school rec kind of joint thing right by the school, um. So we'll be calling the, uh, Fire Department there Chief Clark to, uh, put a little water, help us get kickstarted. Um. Just trying to think, I don't think there's too much other than.
Discussion on.
What are you gonna bring up?
I'm gonna bring that up.
Uh, the mountain biking trails you signed the order, those are finished. Um, we'll be working for signage next spring. And help people guide along. Uh, some people have already decided that it's walking paths, so we'll need to mark it a little bit. They came, it's, oh, it's a pretty steep trail, yeah, that's, that's the downhill for the mountain bike, yeah. Oh, God. Anyway, so we will definitely do signage next spring. And other than that, I don't think I have much other than to thank, um. Bill and Carrie for their online, um, setup of our payment, it worked very smoothly. Once we ironed out a few wrinkles, well, once the people realized they had to actually fill out both. Of the forms, which it was clearly stated on the form to pay and sign your kid up, um. So once we got that, it worked out really well. We only had one check turned in. For one, one on, uh, in-person registration, so that worked out really well.
Good, good.
So thank you for all that hard work. Other than that, I, uh, I don't have much. Bill does have the schedule for our rec game, so if you wanna. Jump in and, uh, go check out a game at the school or if there's a place closer to you, then please feel free to do that. We'll be in good shape. That's all I got, unless.
Questions for?
We did have a rec committee meetings, I don't know.
Yeah, we had a rec committee meeting and the subject of the child that went to Christ the King. Came up and, um, what the whole board needs to understand is that. All of the coaches have an agreement that if you, if you go to Christ, Christ the King, I'm just using the school. Then that's who you'll play for. If you are. If you are not, if Christ the King does not have a team, then you play for the town. We were asked to kind of waiver that for one child and as a committee, we decided. We can't, we can't do that because if we do, then it's no longer the rule. So, um, I guess with that, I would make a motion on that. That we adopt that if you go to a certain school.
Is this the policy?
These three items Sharon that are on this page.
What's that?
This is a policy that we're adopting.
Right.
Okay.
It's, it's really been the policy. It's, it's been the policy for a long time based on. Verbal agreement of rec directors, essentially. It's been reflected on our signup for a year or so. And now we're asking the board to ratify this with adopting this language here as a.
You all have this in front of you? Okay. Sharon's about to make a motion.
Okay, can I use your paper? Cause I don't know where I put mine. Okay, I make a motion that. Non-residents must have permission before registering. Please contact Mike Rowe. The agreement between town and school is as following. If your school offers the program, then you must play for your school. If your school does not offer the program, you then can play for the town. If your town does not offer the program, you may ask to join another town's program. Provided they have room and you have permission from both programs directors, um.
So mo- motions made, is there a second? Okay, go ahead Sharon.
So, all in favor?
No, no, no. Is there any further discussion?
Can I, do you have any, the three of you have any questions about it? Okay, I. It's been, I just, you know, it's been a longstanding practice.
Right.
It's just, and it's been, it's had issues over the years. I mean, it's not a one-time thing, this is a. It happened, just, you know, it's happened multiple, now we're just taking this.
Sometimes you'll find that, um, a family is coach shopping. They like a certain coach, so they want their kid to play for that coach. We can't be doing that.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. There's no further discussion. All, all in favor of adopting the rec policy, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? No, um, it's unanimously approved. So, any other questions or any, anything else the rec committee wishes to bring up?
You like our budget? It looks good. We had a vigorous discussion about overtime.
We're not talking about it, we're all good.
Don't ask Mike about overtime.
Find just the way we are, just keep it there.
Alright, so thank you very much.
Alright, thanks. Have a great holiday, people.
You too. Happy Thanksgiving. Okay, Dave Sears, Town Road Commissioner.
Hello, everybody, hello again. Uh, not really a lot going on, it's, we're in that in-between stage, um, we're trying to do, keep up a little bit of the construction, so we. Um, spent some time, uh, put a couple guys down on the, the multi-use path. And, um, put the sure pack in there, like the top layer of the sure pack. Uh, so basically from the parking lot down back, um, down to where the. The old path kind of wide off and the new path is going is, we just actually just finished it today. Um, so that, that part of it's done, it's eight feet wide, it's really nice, uh, people love it, um. The, the people that have been out there walking on it are really happy about it, so, uh, we'll just keep chipping away at it and we'll get it one of these days. Um, we spent some time, um, as Mary's aware, um, investigating an issue. On the corner of Killington Avenue and Sunset Drive. I think we have it. Setled, I hope. Uh, I hope there's no, no more, no more phone calls.
Well, I, I got a, I got a nice thank you phone call. And the water's going down in the cellar, so I don't know if you or I had anything to do with that, but good for us.
Well, yeah, she called, she called and told me that, um, she did have somebody come and take a look at it and, um. Believe it or not, it's full of silt. So she has, I believe, A one coming next week or something like that, uh, to try to clean it out, so, um. We've made a friend.
Very good.
Uh, in the last couple of weeks, we responded to, to the two small snow events we had. Um, that's primarily the reason I'm not there tonight is because, uh, probably been at some point tonight doing it again. And just FYI, it's actually sleeting here in Orwell right now.
Yuck.
Yeah, fun, fun. Uh, we burned a brush pile the other day, got that taken care of and we got, um. The liquids, uh, spray setups on the, the two, uh, new to us plow trucks. Are all up and running. We had to buy some new controllers for them and some different parts, but, um. We'll put some of that six thousand gallons of mag chloride to use, um. Hopefully, coming up. Um, and, um, working on. The bane of my existence, Quarterline Road, uh, trying to get a, a grader up there, trying to rent a grader, trying to get a grader. Trying to get somebody to do it. Um. And get that kind of graded one last time before winter. Um, and I know, I, I believe you guys have somewhere in your packet, something about an email that came in from. Clarendon, that'd be the one.
Did you get a chance to see it, Dave?
I did, yeah.
Okay, cause. This, to me, doesn't exactly. Sound like the way, you know, we were, I thought when we had that meeting and they were here, um. We were still open to discussion that. If they would do the winter maintenance, it would be better. And I thought that was what we, you know, we said we'll, that you guys and your crew are gonna be able to do it. Um, but it will be in a different format than if Clarendon did it. If, if my.
Right.
Did I not remember that right, or is that the way?
Yeah, no, you're right.
Yeah.
Yep, you're right.
Doesn't the class four road maintenance policy say that we're gonna get to it at the end of the storm?
We'll get to it when we get to it, yeah.
So I guess we need to just email that back to them.
Right.
So they have a copy.
I, I would still like to see Clarendon do the winter maintenance. We'll do the spring and fall and summer maintenance, cause.
Right.
Obviously, that's not time, um, sensitive, but, but I think that we should respond to Clarendon in the fact that. Um, yeah, we'll be able to do the winter maintenance. It probably won't be to the residents satisfaction. And it would be better if Clarendon did it.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, it's, it's a half a mile of road. It's, it, it's not a huge inconvenience. To them, I wouldn't think, but they're making it out to be that way, so. I, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm kind of torn. I, I feel like, you know, we have a couple extra trucks now. So we, we, we're at four, um, you know, I kind of slated the F five fifty to go up there and. And plow that, it probably won't get sanded right away because, you know, he's gonna be doing a lot of parking lots and cul-de-sacs. And some of the steeper roads that we have trouble with the big trucks on. Um, so he, but he could get up there and plow it, get it plowed in a, a moderately timely fashion. Um, I'm not sure that that's gonna satisfy anybody over there because I'm not sure anything will satisfy anything over there. But I think we can get to, I, I know we can get to it faster than we did last year, so. I, I agree that if Clarendon is there and they, and they can do it, I'm, I'm. Sort of okay with that, but I kind of, I know that we're gonna be more responsive to it this year. Than we were able to be last year. So I'm, I'm kind of torn, I don't really, if, if they, if they want to do it and be reasonable about it and just make a pass down there, that's okay. I can talk to Tim Hubbard who plows that section and he can make a pass up there with his truck, but he's not gonna be able to sand it. I mean, he's already there. He can just continue up. Problem is, he doesn't have shoes on his truck because he's, he's, I mean, this is probably a highway committee meeting and we're getting kind of off in the weeds here, but um,
Yeah.
you know, he's going to be out there plowing a dirt road with a, just a bare plow edge. It's likely to make, he might do the grading for us and we won't have to worry about it.
Right. Yeah, does he have a, he has a floating edge too, doesn't he?
Yes.
Yeah, you don't want to do that then. And those dig.
So I would also.
And that's what I'm saying, so.
Keep him out of there.
Yeah. So, you know, I mean, I mean, we may want to.
Let me make this point, if I could, just, it occurs to me that they want to know the name of the contractor who's going to plow. Does that mean they're going to be calling him directly, which I think is a really bad idea?
Oh, I think they're just, I think they're just trying to figure out if we came up with a plan, which.
We, our plan is it's a class four road.
And I don't know where this contractor thing, cause we never said anything about a contractor.
I, I think the contractor goes back to the grading thing when, when Cash gave me the name of the two contractors to do the grading. I think that's what I can think.
Yeah, when it comes to snow plowing, I'm not sure where that's at.
Yeah, no, it's.
The email, yo, the email kind of needs to go of a sort with our class four road policy attached to it, that we're gonna plow, plow it when we can get to it in a, a reason why we may enter after the storm.
A lot of what happened to get us here is that the Quarterline Road residents just kept showing up at the select board meetings and just kind of pressuring them to do something. So this is kind of their attempt at doing something.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I, I, you know, Dave, we, we had those meetings. I didn't think that this is like that big an inconvenience. Um, you know, there was something about, well, the truck only holds so much sand and I don't know if they can do a half mile more road with the sand and it was, you know, and it's, you know, if they don't want to appease their own residents, um, our residents would like the road plowed and taken care of. They don't complain too much, so they come first. Um, you have a plan, your plan is to get to it as soon as you can, probably with a 550, and then they'll have to go back and sand it once they take the salt out. That's what we're going to go with. Uh, if the Clarendon wants it done faster or better, then they need to do it themselves or to me, just, you know, they gotta.
Yeah. We, we tried.
We tried.
We gave them a pretty good offer that would have taken care of all the issues.
And, and the, the board refused our.
They didn't want it.
Yep, so they need, they need to deal with their residents and um, we'll go with your plan. But we can respond to that manner. You know, we have a plan to plow it per our class forward road policy and to Kurt's point, we'll send them a copy of the policy.
Okay.
Yep, we can do that.
Yep.
And then the only other thing, that was kind of all I had. The only other thing was on the uh, on the list was the highway committee meeting, which was our budget meeting.
Yeah, we went through that, that um, nothing, nothing really earth-shattering. Um, we discussed the budgets, um, pretty good shape. Um, there were some things done. They got the uh, ventilation system fixed, um, working on the uh, getting their generator up and running and um, that generator will be added to the uh, list of the uh, ones that are serviced by uh,
Oh, that was the reference in a minute.
And, and actually the contractor is the one that's been working with Dave to get, there was some parts burned out or messed up, so they're getting that taken care of. Um, the biggest thing that's come up, and I don't know, this, this is is far-reaching and very painful, is the state of Vermont, when a new road in town comes along, they assign a highway number to that road. That highway number, to the best of our understanding, is part of our um, uh, aids to grants and aids things as the money we get from the state is based on the list of roads. What has come to light is that the lister's office uses an entirely different numbering system and we don't know if there's any downfall to this or anything, you know, whether, um, the listers are probably not really thrilled with the idea that those numbers would have to correspond with the state's numbers, but if they do, there will be some real time-consuming changes need to be made. So Bill was going to try to do some work. Okay, so Bill has an update, so more to follow, but this is one of those things like, you know.
Is it, do we care?
Well, let's try to figure it out.
That's what we're trying to do. If, if there is an issue that they have to be the same, then we do care. If Bill has information that says otherwise, then we have just throw this in here with the recycling and.
Bill, do you have an update for us?
Yes, do you want to, you want to have an hour to work on that? Okay.
No, this is fine.
I, I had reached out to the state a little while ago when, when this first kind of came up and asked them on a nonspecific reason, eh, eh, why, if, what, what is the scenario for signing roads? And their answer was, we do it, like. Uh, so I, I ended up calling the guy, told him what the issue was, and he said, okay. He's like, so you guys changing your numbers to match what we have is probably not a great plan. We are re, it'd be astronomically a problem to, for us to change it to what you have. So we are going to not do anything with the road numbers you have right now. And what we agreed is that the next time there is a road, it is going to be hot, Town Highway 201 and they're going to go up from there.
Oh.
And we're going to match.
Okay.
So they are going to have a copy of our list. So if, if a reference doesn't match theirs, they're going to look at our, uh, look, li, list. We will, we have their list. So then we, we can, we can, nothing's going to change with what we have now for either side.
Okay.
That was the most equitable thing we, we figured we could do. There are some ordinances that specifically reference town highway numbers i- in them. So we will need to decide which list we're going to use for that, cause it's got to be one or the other.
Okay. All right.
That's easy enough then.
Yeah, I think so.
I talked to the listers. They're very happy with that.
Very good. Okay.
All right, well, that was a more delicate topic, so I think that's it.
Thank you.
This address thing is quite a big deal.
Yeah. Um, any other questions for our highway commissioner?
Thank you, Benny. All right, thank you, guys. Happy Thanksgiving and see you Monday morning.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, right. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Can't wait.
Okay, uh, Marcia Choffey is not on the call. Move along. Chris Clark, Fire Chief.
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening, Chief.
On your desk, I put a piece of paper or two, uh, just a couple items I wanted to go over. We don't have to go over any of the budget stuff tonight. Um, do you have that paper or no?
We do.
Okay. So like number one, um, that's kind of a budget question, but since I'm working on the budget, do you guys have an answer for that?
Well, we did kind of raise it and discuss it a little bit at our last select board meeting and what we said was just you, cause we don't, we, this is about the public safety building and how do we budget for it? So I think our consensus was just use the same numbers you've been using for the old McKinley Station. And then when we have a track record after the, the new McKinley Station is built, we will update it for the next fiscal year. Is that the consensus we came to?
One of, one of the thoughts was is that these specific items, electricity, telephone, water, sewer, heat and the building maintenance may be moved into the general account. Remember, that was.
We did. That was, so is that this year or next year?
Well, I would like to see it this year, but I don't know how to do that because I have no clue what number to use unless we use McKinley's numbers from last year or, cause what'll end up happening is the fire budget will go down a little bit, cause they won't be budgeting and, and they will just be moved into the general, but I think that's up to the rest of you, but I.
My druthers, I'd rather leave it this year and make the change after we have a track record from McKinley, but I don't know. What do other people think? Matt?
Well, this is the same point I raised last time, which I realize maybe there's a limited, well, no, we're kind of a whole heating season and we're talking about fiscal year that starts in July.
Yeah.
Yeah, and goes through an entire winter where we're gonna, but, well, the building won't be done until November, but we'll, we'll so I have most of that heating season, the building's going to be up.
Right.
And I don't see how you would not be increasing all those numbers because right now the police department is in here using heat and electricity in this building to some extent. And.
But it's not budgeted separately.
Yeah.
That's my point.
Right.
Well, you're still going to have to eat this space over here.
Right.
So this isn't going to change.
But no, and.
You're going to have the people in that building, in the new building all the time. So how, it seems to me if you use the numbers at McKinley from the past, that those are going to be too low.
It probably will be. So, I mean, you, so it's like, we want to, we can flip a coin and go either way, but I, I think ultimately it's because it serves two departments, it just would just be in the general account.
I'm, I'm fine with that. I just.
You just don't know what, how do we come up with a number?
I just think that there needs to be a little bit of a margin in there for increase.
But one of the things that, um, the fire budget does have though is, um, that's both stations. They're not broken down separately. So there isn't a separate budget for center and a separate budget from McKinley, so it's very difficult to come up with a number for each station. I suppose Johnsons could tell us how much fuel they put there, but like the electricity, I'm not sure we can budget, you know, figure that out.
Okay.
Or the other option is to take the total numbers for the two stations. And, cause see, Chris has got to still come up with some numbers for center. And so I, I, we got to figure out how to separate. So we either got to do one year of calculating, starting July 1st of this year to June 30th of the next year, that's, would be that. But how we put budget numbers out this year, I'm not sure. Um, you know, we, we could use the fire department's totals for the two stations for one year, put those into the general budget for the public safety building, starting July 1st of next year. And so you'll have extra money in that budget. Chris will have more than he needs and be, because, because one thing is, is there will be no cost for McKinley for like nine months.
Yeah.
So he'll have a pretty good accurate amount of what center costs.
So.
Yeah.
Then, I'm.
I mean, our general budget has a little bit more.
Flexibility.
Yeah.
There's some more money there to work with if we have.
I guess that's the way I would do it.
So two, two folks, maybe three, think, uh, let's, let's address it this year when we do the general budget and put in
Yeah.
um, utilities for the McKinley Avenue Station.
Have, you know, the fire budget will reflect the same numbers. You won't need any increases for, for heating, electricity, these, those five items. He won't need any increases. Put in the same number in the fire budget for those. Um, and we'll use those same numbers, but put them in the general budget for the new building. And then we'll get, so we're either going to have, you know, there'll be, should be some left in fire that they don't spend and with any luck, the combined of the entire fire department will be more than enough to satisfy the new building for the next budget year. Does that work for you, Matt?
You confused me there a little bit. So are you talking about only moving the new building into general or are you talking about moving both buildings?
No, just annoying. But, but budget in the fire budget, Chris would budget the same amount for these five items that he has historically done without any increases, because he's only going to have one station.
Right.
We know that'll be too much theoretically, should be too much. But take that same dollar amount for each of these five items and put it in the general for the public sa, specifically.
You're saying we're going to basically double the amount.
Right. And then spend what you need to spend. I'd rather have it and not be short.
Okay, so we've, we've, the pendulum has now swung very far in the other direction.
Well, it has, but that's the only way to do it, not come up short.
How much, how much money are we talking about?
I, without having that high uh, fire budget right in front of me.
We could, we could talk about that at our separate budget meeting.
Would, would that work for you, Chris, if we do it that way?
Yeah, it works for me.
Yeah, sure does.
I, I mean, eh, cause down the road, that, those items would come out of the general budget because they serve the two departments and there's no way to figure out which department's using what. That, that's just ludicrous even try.
We find out the new building is running on vodka, though. We're going to have some questions.
Yeah. If it's alcohol you're buying, we're going to be figuring you got a different furnace.
So, so um, we will create a, in our general budget, we'll create the lines for the McKinley Station, um, and will also include la, basically last year's number for the current fire, well, for the fire.
You know, we can, we can look at.
You know, and I'm okay with that because any, if there's any excess, it goes into the capital construction.
And it will, I don't think it'll be.
It won't be huge. I don't think these are big numbers anyway.
And, and Chris can use, for his budget, he can use actual expenditures for the last fiscal year because he was taking care of two stations. Now he's only going to be taking care of one. So he, he'll be out ahead a little bit. We should be good.
Our town treasurer has a question.
Yeah. Are we confused you?
First of all, what's my, what did you do when Center Rutland was torn down? How did you budget?
Boy, wasn't here. Wasn't here then.
So, so that year, we budgeted um, normally. They just budgeted, we just budgeted what we needed, say, and, and used what we used. The difference is it was only one department in the building. In Center Rutland, so.
Wasn't the police department too.
Right. The, the issue with the new building is, is you're combining two departments in one building that are going to have shared expenses of the water or the sewer, the electricity, heat and stuff, so it would be hard to break that down to put it into either budget. So that one fiscal year, they started the Center Rutland Station in the spring of 13. There was, I just budgeted the normal, the same amount I did the year before and any excess just went back.
You lost me a little bit. And you're probably right. You lost me when I know that the general budget helps the police, right? That, that's what ultimately happens at the end of the year. But it doesn't necessarily overflow from the fire.
Right, there's, there's no line items in the police budget for these five, uh, building maintenance, electricity, telephone, water, sewer. There's nothing in the police budget for that. So we have, even, it is just figured into this building. It's not set out, so there's no way, and so there's no way to have even any idea what that we got. So when you have two departments in one building, it would be almost impossible to say, okay, police is using 40% of the electricity or 50, you know, it's, so the idea would be to just put those in the general, take care of those five items. Um, the police will not show in their budget anything for those. Fire still will, because they'll be taking care of one station on their own, but going through one, basically. Right, one year, so, so.
Get an idea and then move it forward.
So, so when, when we're here, probably at this time next year doing budgets, the fire department will have a nine, 10-month idea of what it costs to take care of this one station. Starting September 1st of this year to June 30th, they're only got one station to deal with. So there'll be, those items will be down. So in next year's budget, there will be less water, less uh, electricity, less heat, less building maintenance, cause they won't be there and then we will use the numbers that we're projecting being the fire department's totals for those items for the new building. And after we're in that building for a year, we'll know, we, we'll know how close it came and we'll have to adjust them up or down.
And I'm sure when we move forward with all of this stuff for that budget year, vendors, if there's a way to see how much, I mean, phones will get an idea.
Yeah.
And, and, and.
I mean, cause, cause realistically. Because the, because it's not a fire station or police station, it's a public safety building. So the public safety building maintenance will just fund through the general fund. And then, then it's not coming out of either the fire department's budget or the police budget, cause there's no way of tracking, you know, there's not separate power meters. There's no way to see, you know, who's burning how much oil, you know, things like that.
Yeah, so it'd be, and the thing with the public safety building is we will put that money into the budget. It starts July 1st. The building will probably open sometime end October, November.
So we're going to have a couple of non-savings there.
Yeah, there, but we will go through that fiscal year that we're planning for. And we're going to be like two years out before we'll have an actual number.
Yeah.
But the fire stations will know in one year. But the fire stations will know in one year.
Okay, so there, for budget planning purposes, we'll add lines in the general budget to cover these expenses. And, and we'll ask Chris to do his usual just level fund um, these items in his fire budget, knowing that he's gonna be generating, you know, probably is gonna be having more than he needs, but that's okay. We've got it covered. Okay, clear as mud so far?
Well, it's better than being short. I hate being short.
Yeah, I know, I know.
And we won't be over by that much.
So that answers number one. This is, I'm looking at um, Chris Clark's thing. I think the um, number two will reserve for the budget discussion.
Right.
Okay, number three was
I just wanted to go over it so we could uh, I'm hoping number three can start January first instead of July first.
Yeah, let me, let me explain what the fire committee um, discussed at its meeting. There, um, Chris brought in a schedule of what the um, comparable, their counterparts over in the police department were being paid per hour. And made this suggestion here of an adjustment to put the the chiefs and the assistant chiefs and, and the other folks in line with what the payments are on the police side. Um, now, keeping in mind, police is, you know, many of them are full-time as opposed to the firefighters being, this is all part-time, so that's why I asked him to pull these numbers together and make this proposal. And suggested if the rest of the board agrees, that we make these pay raises effective January first. Uh, because, and, and I guess a question is, do we have the money in the budget to do it? Okay? And um, then when July first comes around, we take the increased numbers and we add the pay raise the four percent pay raise to them. Is that a fair summary of, of what we discussed, Chris?
That is exactly what we discussed.
Okay, so what's your thought?
You need a motion to do that, or?
Yeah, I guess, well, yes, a motion would be good.
So I'd, I'd move that we approve the um, increases as requested by the chief.
Uh, beginning January one, as set out in his memo to us. Okay.
Second.
Motion's made in seconded. Um, so chief, did you run the numbers? And in this year's budget, do you have the numbers to take care of this pay increase?
We do.
Okay.
So, do, well, I don't, you wanna vote on your motion or?
Well, I do, if there's any more que- I wanted to make sure that we, we said how we were gonna pay for it and we weren't deficit spending for it. But let me see if there's any other questions or comments from select board members before we vote. And crickets here on our end. Therefore, all in favor of the motion, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, any opposed? Motion carries.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so when you're budgeting, you gotta put these increases in, as I'm sure you know.
Correct. Uh, so number four, uh, starting July first, um, I wrote on here how I, like, the chief, assistant chiefs, captain and lieutenants would get their normal rate of pay for daytime calls. And like right, right now, everybody on the roster gets twenty-three eighty-five a call. Or per hour for daytime calls. So I wanted to switch the chief, assistant chief, captain, lieutenants to their normal rate of pay for their daytime calls, starting in July.
So is that part of our discussion that we'll have when we do the budget, fire department?
Yeah, that, that can be, that can be more for the budget, no- nothing for tonight, but
Okay, so keep that in mind. That's gonna be part of the, the chief's request.
I'm sorry, how is, can I?
Yeah, go ahead. Matt's got a question.
I'm, I'm not following how this relates to the vote that we just took.
Well, we just, so currently it sounds like everybody gets twenty-three eighty-five, whether you're a firefighter or a chief officer. And what Chris is proposing is that, starting July first of twenty-four, um, the rates will be for fire, will be what we just approved, um, above that, so
So the other rates, when do those apply for meetings?
The daytime calls. It's for the daytime calls, cause we've been paying the firefighters for daytime calls. We started that last year, or this, yeah. We're one year into it, right, Chris?
But Mike
We are.
My question is, what distinguishes daytime calls from these other rates that we just approved?
The, the, the rates that we approved, those are for, if I'm not mistaken, I believe that is for administrative work.
Admin work.
Admin work, okay. That was something we initiated, talented in oh-two or three. Um, and then
That's correct, and
Okay, remember when we did the daytime um, call-out numbers, we wanted to make sure that people weren't losing money
Right.
From their, their day job, and when they went on a fire call. So this, you know, all of
And, and you have hours in effect when that takes place, right, Chris?
We do. It's uh, six to four, six AM to four PM.
Okay.
Monday through Friday.
Okay, just five days a week, alright.
Correct.
Hey, yeah, I don't know. So
So that will be, we don't have to vote on that. That's for our budget discussion.
Correct.
Okay.
I can skip number, that can be for the budget. Um, number six, and we talked about, um, not saying we have to do it this coming budget, but we can also talk about that at budget time if you want. Um, for the depreciation fund. I looked it up. It hasn't, none of the numbers have been changed since two thousand one.
This would be, um, have to be a separate
Put that on the ballot.
On the ballot, if we agree to do it. If this is the year to do it, or do we hold off another year?
I think
Was kind of the question.
Yeah.
Okay. So, thank you. Good stuff.
I got one more thing.
Yeah.
Uh, the last thing is, we have a nineteen ninety-two uh, Ford pickup truck currently sitting in the town garage. Um, my plan, if you guys so approve, um, I'd like to order a new pickup. And if we order it soon, it'll be here when the new building opens. And then we can get rid of the current thirty-two-year-old pickup truck that's starting to cost us a little money. Um, it was supposed to be replaced a few years ago. We kinda skipped over it. But I thought
And if I might interject, it smokes like a demon.
Well, I see. Let me make a suggestion on this one. Um, the fire committee didn't hear about this request, so um, and usually we, you know, the committees take a look at the requests before we make a recommendation, so I would ask that we send this to the fire committee to get a little more information and come back with a recommendation. Bill did include in here the Rutland Town Fire, or the vehicle replacement schedule. And that, along with the um, what we have from Chris for the notes
Yeah.
Um, are good places to start, so
So, Chris, I, I would have a, a question if, would you be, um, how much do you use the, the three fifty now?
Uh, not much for the winter. It's more of a, you know, it's got the water tank in the back for brush fires and stuff. Right now, we'd use it for picking up hose at a fire or something like that, but, so I won't get So I was hoping if we could get it out of Dave's garage, he'd have a little more space in there.
Alright, so, so my thought would be, would, would you be able to say once you guys meet with the fire committee, I'm pretty sure, you know, we'll approve the purchase of the replacement vehicle. Um, would you be thinking of getting rid of that right off to free up some space there and not have to you know, and, and have that gone? Um, would that be your plan? Or, or would you wanna hang on with till the new one came?
Well, I, I thought about getting rid of it as soon as we could, just for more room for him, so he can fit some more, you know, his plows inside, but I don't know how you guys get rid of it, so we just
I've had this just
Yeah, I, I mean, I would say, given what happened when we thought we were getting rid of, what, a police cruiser? And then we realized we weren't getting the, the replacement right away. Was that the vehicle we were waiting on? You might wanna hold on that decision, whether you're getting rid of it right away, or um, waiting until the new one arrives.
Okay.
Part of the discussion.
Well, you guys have that discussion, and I would be in favor of that. I'd be in favor of that.
Okay, alright, good. So we'll set up a fire committee meeting? And go over this, thank you. Okay, any other questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, Chris, it was brought up to me, some of those hydrants that are privately owned, like in the Green Mountain Shopping Plaza. Um, we aren't inspecting those, or are we?
Uh, we're not. It's the owner's responsibility.
Yeah, that's my issue, Chris, because I think we need to make the owners responsible to somehow, go ahead, Joey.
There's an ordinance in place in town that we adopted about ten or fifteen years ago, maybe longer, that requires privately owned uh, um, hydrants to be maintained by the owners. Um, the town, I would say, hasn't been following up on that. But there already is an ordinance in place.
Okay, so shouldn't we send a reminder?
I think the committee
Because my, my issue, Joey, is we have a fire down there. They go hook up to a hydrant.
And they're full of stones. I've never done this. Yeah, um, I think that was part of the meeting they had that I, a few weeks ago, was the, the, the hydrant ordinance, and I think there's some movement on that, Mary, you working on that or something? Um, but the ordinance was in place because that is exactly what happened. We, we arrived at a call. Um, that, we tried to make two hydrants, neither one of them would work. Um, I brought it up at a board meeting. Um, long story short, I was told the firemen need education on how to open and close hydrants. Um, that didn't go over well with the fire chief. So, um, within a month, the town had an ordinance requiring that all privately owned uh, hydrants, whether they're on the fire districts or like the Green Mountain Plaza, other ones uh, have to be inspected once a year. And there's supposed to be a sheet and we're supposed to be getting stuff, but I, I just think that it's one of those that if it's not staring you in the face, you don't remember to
Well, maybe we could send them out a reminder. Here's what we did.
Yep.
Okay, and my little note at the top says, because you just said, aren't we working on this? We have an ordinance in effect now to be revised January twenty twenty-four, because I said, please let me get through the budget cycle first.
Yeah.
So, um, that's what we decided. So yes, it's on our radar screen, but not until January.
And, and Bill has been working on locating where a lot of these are.
There's not a fire before then.
Well, Sharon, if we have the time, perhaps we can tackle something more.
Fire hydrant doesn't open, down she goes.
Yep.
Yeah.
How it is.
Even some of the ones that the city maintains for the town don't work.
One of the valleys.
The ordinance says it is the responsibility of the property owner.
Yeah.
It's right there.
Yeah, so we just need to make sure they know, they're aware of it, reminded of it, I guess.
If, if I might, just, ju- just a, a quick, um, in my previous life, I dealt with the Green Mountain Plaza hydrants, and they religiously have them uh, tested and operated. Green Mountain Plaza is really good about that. Uh, and the La Valley hydrant has been replaced.
Yeah.
Okay.
And with any luck, it drains now, or not?
Uh, it does not drain. It's a new non-drain
That's a not, yeah, that's the one you have to pump out.
Yep, that's the new non-draining hydrant, which is obnoxious.
So anything else for our town fire chief? Okay, thank you, chief, and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, you guys.
Okay, um, Kerry Clark, town clerk and treasurer. Oh dear. Yeah, yeah, it's right there.
Hi. Hi. Seems like it's been forever. Okay, let's see. Good news. Cots is up and running. We are online.
Excellent, okay.
Rutland Town's online.
Good.
We're like one of the last one, we're online.
Okay.
I'm so excited. So, um, the link is on our homepage, links onto my page. Um, and it is, I don't know if the link is on Facebook, but the idea is on Facebook, yeah. So excited. I got training for an hour the last three days. Just kind of the, the basics of navigating the site if researchers
People car.
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
And, and for me, for my purposes, I've never used it before, so, um, it's really exciting. The one thing I do wanna put on record, and it is on a pop-up on the site, is that they stopped at a certain point
Yes.
Scanning.
Yes.
And I continued recording as normal, as a clerk should. So, there's a gap of, I've gotta go back to where they stopped scanning, and I started to record and put that into NIMRIC. So, uh, uh, re- Record Hub. And so, um, there's a pop-up that says, here are the books that are available. This is what we paid for. If you need anything past this point, if you're looking for an updated record that may have just come in last week or this week, it's not quite in that system yet. The clerk's working on it, and to call the office.
Okay, so, good. And then, of course, they didn't go back.
They went to book one eighty-five is what we, we can see, but they're getting the exact point where they went back so that we can put that on there.
Great.
As well, and it, it looks like NIMRIC, um,
Cots.
No, no, it looks like NIMRIC, like what, what we asked for as far as the date, December, late in twenty fifteen, I think is when it, when, how far it goes back. So, that's so exciting.
Congratulations, that was a long time coming.
Really was, absolutely. Um, other good news is, I, just before this meeting, um, John Weston sent me an email saying that our underwriting was done for the ACH um, tax payment option, and that after Thanksgiving, he'll get in touch with me. Susan and I decide, are do, going to be the guinea pigs on our taxes to make sure that it's set up the right way. After we have that verification, it should be ready for the public, and I can offer that.
Wonderful.
As soon as it's ready.
Good.
Yeah, um, lot money was supposed to be here around this time. I checked twice today. We haven't received it yet.
I'm sorry, what money?
Our one percent.
Oh, okay.
Local options, tax lock money. Um, not quite here yet, so I'll, when I get back on Monday, I will um, see if it came or
This is one we wanna be really careful about, because the city's one percent has started now.
Why I'm checking every day.
Okay.
Making sure it comes to us and how much it is and all of that. It'll be questioned if I see anything.
Okay, appreciate that.
Absolutely.
It's three times as much SARS, and if it's half as much, there's a problem. On the same page.
Same page. Um, and then, uh, lastly is, um, our, we probably should have a discussion um, on what we're going to do, um, to reach out either to the bond bank or loan wise. We did receive one reply from a bank that it was in your packets. Um, and then there were some questions from, I know our town attorney to the bank to get some clarification. Um, but I put that out there for a discussion because December eighteenth is the deadline for the bond bank application. I sat in on a webinar the other day, um, for more information on how to fill that application out. It is extensive. The first thing, there's a lot of things that we need to work on or get in place to get this application in and, um, through, one of which is we need to choose a bond counsel that is through, one of which is we need to choose a bond council. That is almost the first thing that they ask.
Yeah, so, let's, let's see which way we go, and I think we, we're going to make the decision tonight whether we go conventional financing with the bank or whether we go to bond council. Um, so, um, let's go down to see while we have you here. And that's, um, Board to Review Public Safety Building Financing Options. Um, we have Kevin Brown did some work and sent us around an email. Um, here's, here's the issue. We did get one bank who said, yes, we're interested, and they sent us the proposal. That response didn't take into account that the statute only allows us to borrow conventionally for five years. So if we borrow for, with a, a conventional bank, we have to um, refinance at the end of five years. And that means, of course, interest rates can change. And not necessarily for the better. So however, will, the payments will be amortized over whatever, you know, the ten or twenty year option that we go with, but, um, we have to refinance after five years. And then, you know, the five years after that and the five years after that until it is paid. So.
The only, and I've been one of the ones that keeps bringing this up is the only advantage to a conventional loan is we aren't, we can pay it off early.
Yep.
Without being penalized.
Yep.
You cannot pay off a bond early in any waveform. So if you sign up for twenty years, you're in for twenty years.
That's exactly right.
Whether or not that's an issue, I don't know.
What's the interest? I think you mentioned it last meeting on the bonds, uh, the bond bank route.
Didn't bring it with me, but it's between three point four and five.
Five point four six I have here. What?
You're looking at.
That's for one.
So, three point five and, what's the high end?
Don't quote me on this, but it's around five. He, the webinar I just did, I wrote it down. I didn't bring it in here with me because they didn't know what you needed.
Would it be fair to say it's probably not higher than the commercial?
Correct, correct. But again, to remind everybody, that is a projected. They don't give us that rate until we're locked in, and that they, that they've, um, gone out to buy their.
Right.
Yeah, and right, and right now it's going to be higher rather than lower. Cause you, you can get pretty good money on a CD, so they're gonna, in order for people to pay in to, to buy these bonds, they're gonna have to get a pretty good interest rate return.
Yeah. My concern with conventional, the conventional route is at the end of five years, we don't know where the interest rates are going to be. And they could be.
We have a good five years, the end of five years, you might pay it off.
Pay off a twenty year obligation in five years? I'm not that wildly optimistic.
I was hoping. I think it's more likely than not rates go down in five years, but then is your lender going to want to refinance with you?
Yeah.
I mean.
They rolled into a bond.
Cause we only had one bank this time.
Right, isn't, there's, there isn't competition here, so there's not a lot of incentive. Doesn't seem.
The interest rates aren't that far apart right now. It's five point one six on the, what they projected, if we're looking at somewhere maybe in the five, but um, I know with the bond that that rate is, you're locked in for the duration though.
Yes.
So, that's one advantage. The, I just was hoping for the option that, you know, we, we've been very lucky that our one percent options tax has been coming in higher than normal. Um, and I was thinking that, you know, over a ten-year period, we might pay this off in ten years versus twenty.
How would that work? Would we simply budget for additional payments?
What we.
For fiscal year, under the assumption that the one percent's.
Well, you, you would budget it for the amount, um, whatever the pay repayment amount is. In anticipate, you know, this is a little different than, than budgeting for like a house mortgage, because with a house mortgage, you go in and you say, okay, it's twenty-five year mortgage, and you're paying a thousand dollars a month. But if you want to put eleven hundred on there every month, you're going to pay that off soon. Everybody knows that, and these are a little bit different setups with lump sum payments and, and stuff, so it's, I'm a little more confused as how the payback schedule is.
Which one are you talking about specifically?
Conventional.
Payback schedule under the statute is you have to pay it in five years. So that's why you, you would be amortized as if it were a longer period, but at the end of the five, you'd have a giant balloon payment. And then you'd be relying on the bank to.
And if they said no, they said, no, we're not going to refinance the, the remaining balance. Then I handled, then you'd have to get a bond for the remaining balance. I mean, that option is always out there.
You just bond for the remaining balance, or, you know, if we're good with our capital improvement money, in five years, it's probably not unfeasible to come up with one point four million.
You, you know, I, I'm still leaning towards.
We also have the pool. I think that's going to hit within five years, five to ten years. Yep. Um, and then there's the school bonding that could occur. So those things are going to be draws on.
Could be significant from what I'm hearing.
But they could be draws on the ability of taxpayers to pay too.
Regardless of.
Bondability going to be if we get another bond?
I don't know. What's our, what's our borrow ability going to be if we face a one point four balloon in five years? I don't like the uncertainty. I, I know that you, you'd prefer to, and, and, you know, there's, there's real attraction to saying maybe we can pay it off early, and we weren't able to do that with Center Rutland, and we were really annoyed because of that. Um, in this case, we're using every bit of available cash that we have. And so we don't have to borrow all of it.
Worst, worst part is we've taken a bunch of available cash and put it on a bond that we can't pay off.
Um, I want the certainty.
And the thing is, is we are able, we are able to go either way for this project. Some of the other things that the town may not, may need to do, may not have that option. They may only have the bond.
True.
Option, okay, so if we get too many going, I don't know how that would work, you know, with the school has to go out to do something. Um, the pool's going to be expensive. We're going to have some of the money in it for that pool, but not all of it.
No, no.
I have, I have a minor suggestion that you could do to help kickstart that even more. And that would just be the increase to the depreciation account to the equal of the fire, and then you will accumulate a lot more than you're accumulating now, which is less money you have to borrow later. We've already accumulated quite a bit since we made the change a couple of years ago, probably five years ago, to what we have in there now. If you go, like I originally asked to go what the fire did, what the fire takes.
Right.
Yearly, because that would just build up that depreciation account, which means it's less money that the town has to borrow when that project comes up.
Yeah, so you're going to spend the money one way or the other, you're just not paying interest.
Correct.
And I've always been a fan of that.
See the, you know, the dollar that comes out of your.
Any idea, Mike, five years with a pool would cost? Any, any, I mean, I know you've done a little bit.
If I had a magic window, you're probably looking at three.
Okay.
Is my guess.
Let's get back on this project, yeah. Wait, 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 Matt. He's been waiting patiently.
So, I'm also, I'm just uncomfortable with the uncertainty, and I think we've stretched this conversation as long as beyond where we can stretch it time-wise. We need to be hiring bond counsel like yesterday. And get this thing done, uh, on time. So I guess I'm just going to move that we go ahead with the bond route, because I don't.
Is there a second to go with the bond? I'll second it.
So you guys are all about certainty, but we don't have certainty.
Our bonds could come back at six and a half percent.
That. I'm gonna just say what I heard on the webinar, and, and he didn't allude to that. Stranger things have happened, but.
Well, yeah.
No, but let me just say the previous discussion we had with him like two months ago.
Yep.
Um, it was like around four-ish. So this is not, I mean, it went up a little bit, but it's not a huge jump up to six percent or anything, I don't think.
The commercial quote is, of course, not a commitment, but I can't imagine that the bond would be coming in way more than where the commercial bank is right now.
Historically, that's been true. But history has been being made every day.
Nor would I argue about us being on a, on a bad luck streak lately, so.
I mean, I can, I, I suppose if we go with the, um, bond for this building, and then we've got, we, we will have the option with a pool to do either or there also.
Is there a?
Hopefully, when we get to the pool, we won't have our backs against the wall time-wise. I don't like making decisions when it's, when your back's against the wall. Because sometimes you, you don't always make the best ones when you're pressured. And, you know, I know we've been talking about this for about a year.
Done our due diligence, but we've gotten, we've gone out to conventional banks. We got one quote.
Yeah.
Which concerns me too.
Which is a disappointment.
Yeah. Um, so that, that also raises the.
I would think municipalities would be.
I thought they'd be excellent risks, yeah.
Pretty safe bet that you're probably going to get paid.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I suppose we can look at other ways to pay some other stuff. You know, we can't pay the other bond off ahead of time, but maybe if we have a good year and we have extra monies in that capital improvement fund, we can delay um, putting the Center Rutland bond on the, on the tax rate. Well, keep pushing that back as far as we can, because we've gotten, we've gotten now ten years without having to do that. Um, so I guess that's out there too.
The only, the only issue with that is you're putting that money over there on something that's, you're already going to have to pay out interest on.
Right.
You're bare off keeping that cash, like, what do we put, five hundred thousand on that? The couple of years.
No, well, we put, when we first did it, it was more than that.
We took the balance, we took some money from somewhere, but we just transferred
Was that two years ago?
Half million from the cash to open, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we went from one point five to a million.
Yeah.
To pay off the bond.
That, well, to pay down, make the, make the payments.
Yeah, and that half a million would have been better placed towards the public safety building. Because then we would be saving it from having to bond this, this out at higher interest. Yeah, and I wasn't here.
But the, well, that's, this is the thing, um, so there's a lot of things the town probably could have done different in the last ten years that would have benefited us down the road, but neither here nor there now.
Twenty twenty.
So, I mean, we have this, I, I guess if we have to make a decision, and if we, we can't wait two more weeks, obviously, so.
And, and nothing would happen in the next two weeks that would, I mean, we've, we've gotten the answer from the.
We've only got one bank. I mean, I, I, I still prefer that method, but I understand the other side of it too. Cause if that falls through, then we miss the window of opportunity until June, is it?
Yeah.
The, the bond again, they do it every six months.
And we run out of money before that.
We do.
We figured right February, March. You just signed an order.
Tell them we need.
It's possible to do, but we just signed the order for the one, one installment of the payment to V M.
Yeah, that's the second installment.
That's the second. Yeah. So, any other discussion? You ready for the vote? All right, motion is to go with the bond bank for financing of the two point five million for the public safety building.
We talk in twenty years?
Oh, which, which is it, Matt? Twenty years?
Um, do we have to decide that on this application, or do we decide that later?
Let's do it tonight.
Yeah, let's do it tonight.
You know, things are, we got, we got too many moving parts.
Well.
I think it's ten, twenty, or thirty, right?
Yeah, we asked, we had three.
Think ten would be better.
You gotta pay less interest on a ten-year note.
What's it going to do to tax rate?
Because we will eventually be picking up the center payments too. So that's why I'm hesitating a little bit on, on doing ten years. It would address your problem. What if we get extra money, then we won't be making payments, you know, so long.
Yeah, and the way our one percent money has been trending will be a little bit better off there. And really, we might have to, as we start budgeting, we might have to start capturing more of that to our budgets anyway.
Well, the first, the, the original motion is to go with the bond bank, so we can split it into, we'll, we'll start with that. And then we'll talk ten, twenty, or thirty years. Is that agreeable?
Sure.
All in favor of going with the bond bank? Please say aye.
Right, aye.
Aye?
Under duress, but I'll say aye.
We have no duress here. Um, anyone opposed?
Oh.
Are you opposing?
No, I said aye.
Yeah, he said aye for it.
We'll, we'll go along with it, yeah.
Next motion.
It tells later he's against.
No.
Okay, next motion, how many years?
So we're, we're looking to bond for two point five million, right?
Correct.
So, minimum payment's going to be two hundred and fifty thousand.
You guys have those schedules, probably not on your desk, but they were given to you.
Yeah.
I think I.
Unless it's tattooed on my forehead, I can't remember where it was. But I mean, if you figure ten equal payments, you're going to pay at least two hundred and fifty thousand a year plus interest. Right?
They're, because Kevin ran some numbers too, I think, didn't he?
He ran some numbers for.
Looking that up.
The Center Altland Station, we borrowed two million dollars for twenty years, and the interest was seven hundred and fifty thousand over that twenty-year period.
Yes, the, the, the schedules that I gave you had the interest on there.
Let's see, this was rate size of nine, one, twenty-three.
Is that the schedules that he gave us?
Bank, it looks it. It looks schedule-ish, don't you think? Yeah, so, and then.
For ten years.
Is this from a past meeting?
This is from, I think, when we first met. Yeah, when we met with the bond bank and we bought it, okay. So the.
Can't do that, never comes out.
Um, first one is.
Annual payments, if it was like four percent interest.
Yeah, three point nine seven on one, three point two nine on the other, and four point one eight.
Rough, rough math, four percent, two point five million for ten years is three hundred and three thousand annual payment.
Three oh three.
That look about right?
Principal, let me see.
Don't hold me to it, but, so there's an app for that. There's an app for that. Do that for, um, twenty, twenty. It'll, it'll give us some numbers. They may not be accurate, but at least give us comparison.
Twenty's one eighty-one.
Curious.
For twenty years.
Eighty-one, so.
One eighty-one versus three oh three.
Right, so ten years, you're going to pay back three hundred, three point million, right?
So twenty, over twenty years, you're going to pay one, one point one million in interest.
I had it all, it's in my office.
Yeah, that, that, that'll make it hurt, won't it?
Yep.
Or if you do ten years, you're five hundred and thirty-seven thousand in interest.
So the difference, the interest is doubled. That's the difference, roughly on Kurt's at the app, Mary, the difference is about um, half a million dollars in interest over the period of the loan.
Between ten and twenty years.
Yeah, yeah, twenty years, you're like one point one million in interest paid. That's at four percent.
That's at four.
So is there a motion in there?
I move we bond for the public safety building for ten years.
Second, motion's made and seconded and thirded in discussion. Kerry's got the.
What is the annual payment then, what could be?
Roughly.
Uh, one eighty-one.
One eighty-one for twenty years and three oh three.
Three oh three for, yeah.
Three oh three is right, it's being proposed.
It's going to cramp our tax rate, but.
But you'll save a half a million dollars.
What's that?
What, can you tell me again what you just said?
So the annual payment for ten years.
Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, it's three hundred and three thousand dollars.
And that includes the interest.
Because one, and that takes in consideration that one a year is principal, one a year is interest. And it's just for, so it's, there's, there's a whole schedule.
There is a schedule.
Oh, I'm sure there is.
But, I mean, we're just doing rough numbers.
We're doing rough numbers here.
And I think the total cost for the year.
Yeah, cause the first year you should pay most. Yeah, cause the first year you should pay mostly interest. It's like ninety percent and ten and then it works.
I found this, I found that sheet.
Did you? Good, okay, Matt's got it too. Tell me which one is the ten year one. Just went away.
See, did Mike's, Mike, Mike's intellectual curiosity.
Happy Thanksgiving, Mike.
Okay, ten year.
They break it down here. So the interest. Here on this schedule for ten years. Is, so the principal, we're borrowing two point five. Over ten years, we'll end up paying five fourteen in interest. Five hundred and fourteen thousand.
Okay.
It's pretty close to.
Very close.
On. On the twenty years. Um, we would be paying one point one million dollars in interest. And then on the thirty years, we would be paying very close to one point seven in interest. All right.
We're not going thirty. It'll make the burden less, but you're paying for it.
Are you looking at these?
Yeah, it looks very much.
So the interest uh that we're accumulating each year is at the top there. Under debt service schedule, under the interest and it's different.
There it is, five fourteen years, you know, when we do like the tax rate.
That's right, cause the. The interest changes, but the principal payment is fixed.
Yes, right, and it's also a deferred, you don't.
Right, it's deferred for a year. Yeah. Did you, did you catch all of that?
It's actually an eleven year note.
That's right.
Yeah, there's the first ones, yeah, so it's an eleven year note.
And the interest, the interest goes down. The principal stays the same each year, so the payments.
The payments are the same, the first year you're paying ninety percent interest and ten percent principal, and then it just kind of.
No, no, the, the interest changes.
Yeah.
Right.
The principal does not, so that, that's a little bit different than a conventional.
Right, but the, the numbers we came up with are.
But you guys are pretty close. Okay, so the pending question is, do we bond for? Ten years? Any further discussion?
Do you have any idea what this translates into for people's taxes?
No, not because that has so many different things.
Yeah.
And it's going to depend on when we start asking the people for it, or are we?
And we, yeah.
Feel like there's more questions to be had.
Well, there, there is, but if we're deferred for a year, then it's a discussion, maybe not. Well, it'll be for the setting the tax rate next year.
We may, we may have, we'll know, we'll at least know when the first payments do.
Right.
That'll be a real start.
We have to budget, in this budget discussion, we need to include the, the initial.
No, not this.
Not this one. The start is twenty twenty-five.
Would be within the fiscal year, but it's not part of. Setting the tax rate discussion.
Do you have interest, you have two interest payment? No, I guess just one, the first interest payment's gonna be in the coming.
Yeah.
So we start this process, we get approved. It'll be next year, we'll be in the twenty-four before we're approved, right?
Yeah, get approved early in the twenty-fourers.
Yeah, the money becomes available.
End of February, beginning of March, exactly when we.
Right, right on time, and then we can draw on that. For the year, and then the payments will start sometime in February of twenty-five.
The payment looks like. If they stick to this type of schedule, the, the principal payment, um, the first principal.
November first of twenty twenty-five.
The first principal will be November first of twenty twenty-five. I do see the three interest payments starting in May.
Twenty-four? Yeah, cause that would be a year.
In this current, that's this current.
Right, Matt.
So we have to pay on the interest within the first year. So we get the money, say, the first of March. The interest payments will start in May of twenty-four.
Correct, the second one then is November.
That's correct.
So we have in this current fiscal year, we would need to pay.
Of an interest.
Interest payment, and then we need to budget in this current budget discussion. We have two. November first, twenty-four and May first of twenty-five. That we need to plan for.
It, no. Actually, we, it doesn't go in the budget discussion, it goes in the tax rate setting discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
Okay, so ten percent, any further discussion, ten years. All right, ten years, all in favor, please say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries, ten years and we're going with the bond. Next is bond council, because we do have to determine that. I was sent, Kerry sent me the list of bond council, I recognize. One name on it, um, someone I have worked with, I will also say he's been. He's past president of the Bar Association for which I work.
You making a recommendation?
Um, I would, but, but I'm giving you all of this background, so, you know, um.
You too, when it comes to legal people, I'll put some trust in you.
Well, let, let's start with Matt then.
Well, I know. I've, I've not been involved in any bond.
Right.
So I don't, I can't speak to. Bond council, I recognize a lot of these, several of these firms. One of which the most obvious for as far as our. Area is concerned is. Stitzel, Page and Fletcher is now where the former city attorney Matt Beamer is working, so. Whatever that's worth, Matt's local.
Stitzel Page of, and Franklin, uh Fletcher, sorry, it's Bob Fletcher is. The guy that I've worked with on the V B A board, I kinda like him and he seems to.
I like working with local.
He's not local, he's Burlington, but there's an offshoot. Yeah, so. Are we agreeing? To recommend?
Well. What would be common practice here? Do you need to get a couple of quotes or? I haven't worked with their firm, so. I don't know how these rates are gonna compare. I know that that firm does primarily. We should probably get rate sheets. The F rate sheets. Can we compare hourly rates?
Can, we're running out of time.
I, I'd go on with the recommendations and doing that, I'm okay with that. This is not like we have.
Tom Fletcher?
Dude, will you, will you? Maybe, would there be a motion perhaps to delegate to us to figure it out and find somebody? Cause it's possible the first person we call says no.
I could do that too.
Lowest available rate?
Somebody that, cause there's some, there's one or two brand new. Players in here that I don't know anything about, so. I want somebody who knows, has done the work.
You guys on the finance committee?
Yes.
So I move that we authorize the finance committee. To locate and secure bunk, bond council. For the purpose of securing a bond for the public's safety building.
Motion's been made and seconded to toss the hot potato to the finance committee discussion. All in favor of the motion to have finance look into bond council and.
Secure that.
Secure that, um, please say aye. Okay, motion carries.
Cause this needs to be done yesterday.
Yeah.
Maybe at least last week.
Okay, so that takes care of. Um, public safety building options, all right. Kerry, anything else?
I think that's enough for tonight.
Okay, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. We'll try again next time.
Delahanty isn't on, but Larry Delvenary is, so Larry, thank you for your patience.
I'm here. I'm here, yeah.
Okay. What can we do for you?
The state is expecting a letter from the, the board. Saying that we can cover the cost. This, this happens with every transfer station that's out there in landfill. If we, if the town decides to close our transfer station, do we have enough money? To pay to get rid of our recyclables and our trash?
I think so. Should be able to handle that.
Um, the, the letter states we can re, um, utilize our reserve cash account. Which has one million in it at the time, and frankly, if we close down our transfer station, that would be available. Um, we would, the question about whether we would have to get the voters' permission to do so, but should that ever occur? We'd have so many.
To close that down, to get rid of all our trash and stuff, would be seven thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars.
Okay, that's the not to exceed nine thousand, right?
Yes. That nine thousand is two thousand nine.
Uh, what's your pleasure? We all get to sign.
We have to authorize to sign this.
Move to approve.
Motion's been made to approve the letter, um, that informs the state that we have a cash. Reserve cash account we could use to pay for landfill closure costs, should that ever occur, and we hope it doesn't. Transfer station closure cost. Um, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, anyone opposed? Okay, gonna circulate the letter.
Could be tight after we just signed up for that big bond.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Larry, appreciate you staying on top of those things. Okay, um. So. Anything else or? You, you, uh, we did set, um, Monday. December eleventh for the, um, budget meetings, so Bill will be in touch with you. About making sure your numbers are in for us to use, and I'm sure they probably already are. Okay. Next.
Press doesn't need to sign that.
Oh. Did you guys, this side of the room want to say?
We got three, that's how many.
Bill, sweet, town administrator assistant of the select board.
Good evening.
Hi.
We've gone through everything I had.
Good, good.
Okay.
Uh, anything special you need for the budget meeting, and I, I will have. Budget sheets available very early next week, if anybody wants to pick them up, or I can, or you can come get them.
Here, here is my request, and I make this every time, put the date. On each budget sheet, so we can throw away the old ones and keep the new ones, okay?
Problem. Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, we should, you know, because there's so much paperwork, it would be better if we kind of scooted in rather than Bill sending them to us. The, you guys have the highway one, that is.
Yeah.
That is the dot, that is done.
That's a done deal.
Were you guys gonna let us vote on it or?
Oh, yeah. That's what we're proposing.
Okay. All right, so we did the highway committee, um, meeting, we did the fire committee meeting, we did the police committee meeting. Um, we are, we did A under action needed, which is the meeting with the mend and select board. Cortina in.
The other budgets, Phil, are they? Pretty, everybody pretty much done or?
Fire's pretty good, rec is done, police needs another meeting. Uh, planning commission, they're, they're, they're all set. Larry, I think is all set. Have we, has there been a?
The other items on, the other items in the general.
Yep.
Um, who, do we do those?
Constable, the constables are all set. The listeners know they're, yeah, that listeners have to do that.
Kerry's input for her.
Yep.
Stuff.
We, we, all the, um, compensation ones are, are taken care of, and that's all based upon, she's not the formula, so. I think I got all that in there.
Emergency management?
Yeah, Marty's aware.
Okay.
So I told, I told him he has till middle of next week to tell me, so.
The, the generator contract, we've already done that, so that'll be reflected.
So. I, I, I've requested the information. On the generator we're putting at the new building, so I can get it to our contractor, so they can. Give me an idea of what it'll be next year.
Okay.
I don't have the generator information yet, though.
We should make a note when we have that executive session with J P to. It's his air goal between, so he should be able to get that.
He's, he's the one asked for it.
Okay, so you have in front of you. The twenty twenty-three settlement, settlement agreement with Cortina in. Um, it has been signed by Truv Kumar. Um, member manager and duly authorized agent for A D R Realty.
Now, can we verify that?
Well, we had this discussion with Kevin and. There is a representation in here that he is, as I, you know, if you authorize me to sign, I.
You sign your name so I can read it.
Okay.
I, I take, I.
I was emailing back and forth with him. And when I asked where it was, he sent it to me and the email known to me to be coming from him. So I believe it's his signature.
Okay. I take.
Remember how bad Josh Taranzini's signature.
Well, I said, um, I used to call him Dr. Taranzi, well, I just. Because if. This were to come before a legal. Entity for some reason. I would not be able to discern that this gentleman signed this.
He's probably signed some other documents you'd have to compare.
We'd have to have like, because I'm telling you, that's, I, I take more pride in my name than that. Okay, but do you want a motion to approve this?
Um, sure, please.
I'll move that we approve the contract as spelled out here.
Okay, is there a second?
My question is, cause you're gonna ask questions.
Okay.
Is, um, I've read through this, but. You and Matt. Did ninety-nine and nine tenths percent of the legwork, does this reflect, this contract reflect what you? Asked for and what we approved as a board?
With.
Couple of change.
A couple of changes.
Right.
One change is that we had asked for, we, we thought we were in agreement, but it turns out they wanted it out. With saying that the Cortina would provide emergency winter shelter for up to ten people. They took that out. I mean, given all of the other things that are in here, we, at least I felt that wasn't a big deal. Um, they took out some language. And, um, on page three, section E at the top. We had said in, in section E, I think this is where we put it. That, um. We would use this number, if we ever, if we were ever in an act two fifty proceeding. We would use this as the reasonable cost to the town, whatever the monthly payments were. Um, and this would be offsetting the, the cost to the town, and we would use that number, they didn't like that language, we didn't feel. It was harmful to us to take it out, so we took it out. They also changed, there was a reference to. Um, the hospitality nature of Cortina that it was just sort of like what they did. Uh, but they left in as a hotel and hosp, um, and put in hospitality services, I think those are the things that. Stuck in my mind, Matt, do you remember any others that?
That was about it, I mean, I pretty much. Agreed to what we. Discussed and outlined in our initial meeting.
Just, you know, for public consumption, um, this provides for. Catch-up payments.
Yep.
Beginning at the end of June of, um, twenty twenty-three. And within thirty days of our signature on this, they have to pay, uh, what is it, ninety-one, ninety-one thousand five hundred? And then beginning November first, which of course has passed, they do need to make the monthly payments of twenty-two thousand. Um, five hundred, and then, uh, for the next. In, in six month increments. Um, it increases for five percent. It increases for five percent, the monthly payment increases five percent each of the next, and then it, then it flattens out. Um, our thought was, and we, I, I think it's fair to say, we said, we are past the stage where we can cover. The extra policing services needed with overtime with our existing officers, and we need to start putting folks. We need to start getting new officers and adding it to the force, so that's, should allow for us to do that. Any other questions? It also runs with the property, so.
I think those were all the things we.
I would just editorialize, cause I look forward to reading all the. Comments on, on Facebook when Roland Harold posts a story about this, and all the people saying we should have shut him down and stuff, well.
We don't.
People need to understand that we don't have the power to wave, magic wand and shut. This down, this agreement includes. A number of things that the Cortina ownership is agreeing to do, that they have not in the past made an affirmative agreement to do. So, I think if the board approves this, I think. This is a good deal for the town, I think it's a good deal for the owners, and I think. You know, not the least of which is a good deal for the folks that are living in this building, because, you know, I. Hopefully, now, as I said before, trust the, but verify here. But I think this is an agreement that will hopefully lead to. An improvement in conditions, we'll see, you know, we made it clear that our preference in the long term is to have a hotel down there. You recognize that there is a housing problem right now, and that. Kicking folks out of there isn't gonna solve the problem, so. Though we.
Yeah, because this isn't something the town has any control of.
Not much.
Not much, I mean, we, we are trying to make, and, and I like this because to Matt's point is, we have. And on your negotiations agreed, or got them to agree to some services for these folks that they haven't been providing, and, and so. I, you know, we're doing as much as we can for those folks out there.
Okay, if you're ready for the vote, all in favor, oh, wait. You also have to authorize me to sign as chair, is that included in your?
It was.
Motion, and second, okay. So all in favor of approving the settlement agreement with Cortina and having me sign on behalf of the board, please say aye.
I said aye.
Okay, sorry, I didn't hear you, um, and I.
I said you usually don't.
Sorry, Sharon, I do try. Okay, what is today's date, twenty-first?
Twenty-first.
Motion carries.
Let's see where this goes.
All right.
What do you need to happen to that contract now?
Um, so it should be scanned and sent to. Well, you can send it to me and I'll send it on to Dhruv. Make sure the police chief has it, and make sure all of the members of the select board have it, and it's now a public document, so.
This, this copy's good, I don't need another one, though. Doesn't have Mary's signature, but I'm going to put in her line approved.
And we, yeah, so we, he'll get one, obviously, he'll get a scanned copy, um, we keep the original here.
Yes.
Okay, all right, so that takes care of B. Um, the transfer station was D, that's taken care of, and what we have left is. The public safety building. Change orders. And John Paul is on, um, do we wish to go into executive session?
I think we should.
I would move that we go into executive session to discuss the proposed change orders, and I'd also like to add to that. Discuss the status of the land sale.
Okay. Okay, and to hear advice of council, cause that's included in first.
To.
Well, read advice.
Read advice of council, yes.
Motion seconded by Joe, all in favor of going into executive session with JP joining us for the first, please say aye. Okay, motion carries, thank you. Out of executive session at nine thirty-five, is there any motion?
So I move that we deputize Mr. Gennaro to. Communicate with, uh, architect Ed Clark regarding the, uh, proposed change orders.
Second.
And report back to the board, is that right?
And report back, that's part of that.
Okay, yes, I thought I heard that, okay, motion's been made and seconded, um, discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. A motion's been made to adjourn, seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, folks.